Here's the real key, I think, why I elected that. People went like, okay, we know this Joe guy from DOA. It doesn't mean we're fans of the music or agree with everything. But we know that him and his band have stood for something and been activists for years and years, right?
That was a clip from today's guest, Joe Keefley. Joe is a Burnaby city councillor and founder of legendary punk band DOA. Joe became interested in politics at a young age. Coming up during the Vietnam War, he wanted to be a civil rights lawyer. With half a term at SFU under his belt, he set out to change the world, trailblazing the touring network and DIY ethics still used by bands all over the world. I tell you, this was a super cool interview. I mean, like any punk, but any Canadian punk, especially Western Canadian punk. I grew up totally on DOA and Joe's influence was huge in my life. At all different stages, when I was like really, really like a young punk getting into it. But also it was like, you know, I was in a band that toured a lot and I was someone who's very interested in politics and ideas and how the two, being a punk and those ideas in practice worked together. And as an adult, just seeing someone that has really lived it and put those words into action, really, it's so impressive. It's made a huge difference and it was just a massive honor talking to Joe. So this is a great episode. I think you'll get a lot out of it. But before we get into it, please rate, review and subscribe to the podcast. I'm Aram Arsenean and this is One Step Beyond. Hey, everyone, welcome back to the show. Today's guest is someone that I'm really honored to be able to speak to, someone who I've looked up to for a lot of my youth, but also like my adult life. So with that, Joe, welcome to the show.
Yeah, no, thanks for having me around. It's great to be here. For people that don't know me, my name is Joe Keefley, but I'm very known as Joey Shithead, leader and founder of DOA punk band. Started just a couple of years ago, I think 1978. So into forty, a mere forty-five years now. And I'm also a politician that people used to say that, you know, there was a big magazine in England 20 years ago said, DOA, they're cultural politicians. But now I got elected five years ago, I'm a city councillor in Burnaby.
Amazing. And so in our pre-roll, just so everyone knows, one of the things I wanted to talk about was, I really do want to focus a lot on being involved in politics. And the first question I want to hit on is, so I can't speak so much now because I'm quite a bit less involved. But in the punk rock that I grew up in, different ideas and very specifically politics were like kind of at the backbone. And some of it could just be like personal politics, what you eat, whether or not you drank, you know, how you treat each other. But a lot of it was also like real deal, actual politics. But as people get older, I found that a lot of ways that people who involved in punk kind of did their politics as they became teachers or social workers or therapists, or they're more involved in their activism, what they do for a job. You're one of the few people who actually became a real politician. So what inspired you to actually get involved in actual politics?
Yeah, I mean, I was growing up in North Burnaby. I was really interested in politics the whole time. When I realized that I wasn't going to make the NHL, people told me that pretty clearly, I was about fifteen or sixteen, right? I was, I got pretty interested in becoming a civil rights lawyer. And I was inspired by some of the protests in the United States. So you're talking like during the Vietnam War era, which I saw every day on TV from the time I was like eight years old, right? Some of the most horrific stuff you ever seen. They censor all that stuff now, right? No, but so that kind of got me thinking that I want to be a civil rights lawyer in the mode of people that had dependents on these people, these protests and stuff like that. So I went to Simon Fraser University and I went through half a term. And all of a sudden I was in a punk rock band. So I became a lawyer and you know, but the background to that was really kind of the first protest stuff that I ever saw that got me launched in this direction was the American military were testing nuclear weapons in the Aleutian Islands, which is connected to Alaska, obviously, right? And Greenpeace, which just started at that point, you know, seventy-two, seventy-four, around there. I mean, probably a little earlier, but they got all the students to leave their high school. They came out, come on down, the protesters protest American nuclear testing. And we left Burnaby North High and the principal actually stood up in the driveway with his arms out like this, trying to stop about three hundred students from the protests. And we all laughed and thumbed our nose at them. And we went by Britannia High and we went by Templeton and you know, yelled and screamed and the kids came out of there and we surrounded the American consulate downtown on Penner Street and marched around. And we didn't know at the time, they're probably the entire staff was up for lunch and didn't hear a goddamn thing, right? So that was the start of it. And my brother was a teacher overseas and he got me quite interested in politics. Like after the overthrow in Chile of Alende by the military. And so he was really up on that stuff and also like a union leader and negotiator. So that kind of set the path.
So all of that stuff like DOA, because I do want to tuck a bit into DOA. So like this, this show, we have people from the punk scene listen, but we have people from kind of like all over the place that listen. DOA and politics, I've always just like, they always seem to me to be like one on one. And it's interesting though, because like, do you feel that like punk versus how it was when you were young to how you are today? Is punk still like a useful vehicle for politics?
Yeah, it certainly is. And that's the way it started out because we, you know, we looked around and we tried, when I was young, we tried to have a rock and roll band. And you know, we got fired from our first show and said we should start a punk band. You know, we weren't particularly good, I will freely admit. But when we heard about the stuff going on in England and New York with the punk scene, you know, a lot was like, I mean, we really liked the Sex Pistols, although Johnny Rotten has turned into like, like, like a right wing lunatic type thing, right? I can't, I can't believe it, even though he was a singer on one of the greatest albums of all time, you know, whatever, right? That, there's the politics really, really attracted us. And I thought, okay, I've always been interested in politics and being in high school. And finally, this new type of music, because like when I was growing up, we were listening to protest music, like Jimi Hendrix. It's one, two, three, what are we fighting for? I don't know, don't give a damn. Next stop is Vietnam. I can't remember that guy's name, but anyway, the protest of era of that music or rock and roll, sixty-eight to seventy-one, was really interesting. Then to me, after that, rock became really corporate, right? But then punk rock happened and we're like, oh, this is the way rock was meant to be, that you gotta stand up to the bullshit and to the man and tell it like it actually is, you know? It's like became, to me, I was also really into folk music too. Like, you know, from the protest days and stuff like that, late sixties. And to me, this became like a new type of protest music. And so that, that made it, made that work for me. It attracted me to it. So, but to answer your question, that was a really long answer for a short question, I'm sorry. The kids today, you know, it's like punk got pretty corporate. Once it got popular, you know, they'd Blink-182, whatever. I mean, the fine band and all stuff like that, I'm not knocking them, but it really changed from what it was. So you know, in the 2000s, when it finally hit its stride, you know, and became a big commercial entity, a lot of the politics got taken out of it. But the underground scene that you go today, that we still play in, there's a lot of people that are involved in really worthwhile things, right? You know, like anti-war stuff, helping people with poverty, helping people with housing. So to me, it's like, it's, it's still the same.
So it's an interesting point because it's like, there's like punk and there's like scenes within scenes. And like, if you think of like the whole Discord thing, how Ian McKenna, all the people involved did that Revolution Summer, where they're like, hey, this has gotten too big and we're kind of disassociated from that, but we're still punks. Let's get back to the politics and the ideas. And they did something smaller that kind of took on its life of its own. So punk just like, it feels like, it's like, going back to that idea of like protest music, it's like, it seems like there's always a core of protest music in it, but it's like constantly reinvent, that core of it is constantly reinventing itself when the other waves get big.
Yeah, I mean, and it should reinvent itself because the world keeps changing. Like it's a far, far different place, what this world now than when I was a young man, right? So people have, you know, what, things change. I mean, like, I always say, there's like four or five things that stayed the same. And you know, like, what was DOA fighting? We were fighting sexism, fighting racism, fighting weapons for liberation, fighting greed. And people will say, well, what are you fighting now? And so, well, we're fighting racism, sexism, weapons for liberation, greed and environmental destruction. You know, that was in there too, right? So things haven't really changed, just the, the world has changed. I mean, I'm not so sure it's for the better.
What's interesting about what you just said to me is like, being today, being a punk today is like, you know, like my next door neighbors in the punk. Like it's a very normal thing, but back in kind of the era that you're describing, it was like actually dangerous to kind of be a punk, right?
Yeah, my buddy Jerry Hen, who was based by, said in Subhumans, he got his job broken by a guy with a motorcycle on it because he had green hair, you know? So you had stuff like that, where it's like you say, it's like normalized today. It became more commercialized, right? So my daughter, when she was fifteen, came home with a sweatshirt from the mall that was pink and said anarchy, right? And I was like, okay, they commercialized Eric's movement, right? And she was, and I just went, okay, they're selling this in the mall now, right? I kind of thought that would happen quicker, but it didn't happen till you got like bands like Green Day, Rancid, became popular. They were actually selling records, like the guys I hung around with, the black white guys, you know? The only guys who were making money were the guys in the Kennedys, right? You know, and you know, long live Darren, you know?
Yeah, definitely, definitely. So like, what was the draw then? Because back then it was like legit dangerous and the shows weren't big because you were all at kind of the forefront of something. What was the draw? You were these young kids, you weren't great musicians, you know, like you weren't good enough to be in rock bands, but you found this thing. So it was dangerous and it was political. So why were you, why were you all involved?
You know, I think we were just, me and the guys I grew up with, like Wimpy Roy and Dimwit from the Subhumans and later in DOA. Jerry had a, four of us all grew up in Burry Mountain, like four blocks apart. And we all were politicized at a fairly young age, second high school, right? And when we heard this, like, well, this is really kick-ass music and you know, kind of tells it like it is. I think I said earlier, right? So that drew us in and, and it's all stuff like, I remember one of the first things I saw on TV when I first started hearing about punk was one of my favorite bands was The Damned. And it was an ABC News special and it showed the drummer, Russ Gabby's lighting his drum set on fire with like lighter fluid. And we're going, we're like seventeen or eighteen, we're going, whoa, like, that's crazy, man. And then, and then it showed the band too, it would have one of these acoustical tile ceilings that they were playing. And it showed the fans ripping the ceiling out. And I went like, I want to be in a band where people, where people react like that, right? And about six months later, we played in a room at SFU, rented a room, put on a show, you know, fifty people showed up. And people got up and ripped the ceiling down, like, we're just like the Damned.
You made it, man.
It, it was attractive because it was fun and wild and there was, and I think that the thing why, what got people into is it was just so much fun and there were no rules. Like rock had become very corporate, very sold, come on vibe, all that kind of stuff. But punk rock was like, wow, this is wild and out of control. And in the same way that, you know, rap was like a few years later, right? It was just when that came out, people were like, whoa, like, you know, we, nobody had ever conceived anything like that, right?
So in Vancouver though, the, the politics were baked in right away. And like you said, you're kind of radicalized when you're younger, you grew up in the backdrop of the Vietnam War. In Vancouver though, there was kind of a, there was, and I think still remains kind of a history of direct action of punks actually like doing things more than just protests, like actually like all of the things that, you know, were, that people were involved in that ended up with people having jail time. Like any thoughts on any of that?
Yeah, I mean, I, I think, well, one thing to be clear about is that one thing that makes Canada great, not perfect, but a really good country, is civility. And we see there's a lack of civility in other countries. And so unfortunate violence, even though it can be aimed at people that are doing horrible things, violence is not the answer, you know, to me. I've always believed that, right? So you know, we did benefits and helped the Vancouver Five, Scottish Five, that, because we thought, no, they're not going to get a fair trial, right? So we did benefits and got other bands like DK's, Red Tide from Victoria, I'm not a people, even people down in Texas to help raise money for Amanda, just hope we get a fair trial. But I never thought like, Tate, you know, you can change a lot more if you keep it peaceful. But you've got, it takes more work because you've got to convince people like, look, what they're doing here is wrong. You know, like the Litton system in Toronto, for example, with this Scottish Five, you know, making the guidance system for the US cruise missiles, you know, is that a good thing? Yeah, I guess somebody's going to make it because there's money in it, right? But you know, it's, it's not a good thing, right? You know, increasing, increasingly weaponizing our planet, right? It's not a great thing. And we see where we're at now, right? So I mean, shit, you're just using F twenty-two to shoot down a balloon. Yeah, and there's a lot of different things about that, you know, but we'll get into that. So I think that, you know, yeah, people, you know, like who's the greatest guy? Greatest force for change, Mahatma Gandhi, that was peaceful.
It's like, it's an interesting thing for me. So both myself and my partner Monica, like we're both, both vegan and like real into, into it. And, and also like, I hope people always feel that like we're cool about it or whatever. And part of me is like, damn, like direct chat, direct action, like animal rights activists, like our friend Jake, who, you know, the grumpy vegan, shout out to Jake, has this great history that he can speak about, where it's like, damn, this direct action is super powerful and can kind of shake up the system. But I also love what you said about, about like, hey, peaceful, but consistent. And the consistency piece is the thing that stands out for me because like people get older, they have jobs, they have families. Like being consistent around peaceful action, applying like constant pressure is a really useful tactic. And that's where I kind of want to go into your space is like, you know, you've got direct action, then you have peaceful protests. It's got to be consistent, but there's also like getting involved in actual politics, which is what you've done.
Yeah, that's taking a step forward further. And boy, it involves a lot of time, time and effort, obviously too. I got involved really, I mean, I had an interest in politics from the time I was like twelve years old onwards, right? It was like for a real history book type thing. So, but how I got involved, there was twenty hectare forest right near where I lived in the center of Burnaby that was going to be cut down and turned into like, like a high-tech industrial park, right? You know, EA's there, it's like electronic cards, et cetera, et cetera. Kodak was there, fewer companies, right? And so myself and about five neighbors, we organized about this sixteen-hundred person petition. Took it to City Hall, City Hall was jammed. There was one family that got up, they had written a song with the mother and father and two young kids and played violin and sang. And you could see the mayor getting more and more annoyed. And I, and everybody got a chance to speak. It's like, I finally said to the mayor, you know what? You're in cahoots with these guys. If you're listening, I don't know, cahoots just means like, I think that expression is back from the old west or something. And he just looked at me like, I hate you, right? And later on, about five years ago, fortunately, me and my friend, current mayor Mike Hurley, helped defeat him. But it took, it took a while, right? Anyway, so long story short, what, after that, there was a provincial election coming up in nineteen ninety-six. Right, and City Hall, like somebody knows that, I was just like piss off, right? And the forest got cut down anyways, right? So, so anyway, so after there's provincial election ninety-six, after that protest and somebody pulled me up and says, hey, my name's Tom, I'm an organizer for the Green Party. Do, would you like to run in the provincial election? And I answered like, no, you're talking to, you're talking to Joey Shithead. I hung up, right? And about two weeks later, I saw some more stuff about the election. I was like, huh, well, that would be interesting. So I ran, I said, I phoned them back, I found his number and I said, I'll run. It says, get, get, we need candidates. And so the sole support I got for them were, Green Party was in a young version than in Canada, right? Now, I got three signs, made of cloth, like recycled, you know, recyclable signs. And I printed out flyers myself and then my two oldest kids at the time were like seven and eight. I bribed with, don't worry, you help me handle flyers, we'll go to the seven month and get, get candies. And there's your payoff if you come along with me and handle flyers. And they did, and that was the campaign. And I think I placed fourth out of six. I got five hundred votes, which was a long ways away from winning. And so that, I went through the campaign and went like, wow, I got my ass kicked. But that was really, really interesting because you like, you got to interact with so many people and get their opinions. And when you knock on somebody's door and tell them that you're running for something, you think you're going to tell them what your ideas are? No, they're going to tell you what they think is wrong, which is a good thing.
I love that, what you just said, like, this isn't a victory story off the bat. Like that forest got cut down, your first time at bat, you did lose. So how did you keep going?
Yeah, well, I kept pointing, DOA was still going. So that was, DOA is always been like a perfect soapbox for me, right? You know, with, you know, as you know, like not all songs, but most of the songs have some intent or a political angle or comment on society. And it just kept going and then another election came up, provincial election two thousand and one. And then the Green Party did really well. I ended up with like almost twenty percent of the vote, but I didn't win, right? So, and the NDP was decimated, the BC Liberals came in with under Gordon Gamble, right? And, and I ran against a guy who, the NDP guy was a friend of mine. I used to play acoustic at his coffee shop. And he was mad because he went, Joe, I could have won that seat, but you had to stick your big fat nose in the way and take, you know, split the vote, right? I'm going like, Dave, it's a democracy, right? Sorry, you know, we're still pals, right? So, and that, and I got really encouraged by that because I did get the, I got the second highest vote level for any of the provincial Greens besides the leader, right? So I got, okay, people know this. And then that went along for a bit. I ran in four provincial elections. I tried to get a nomination for the NDP in provincial election twenty thirteen and I lost that nomination by about five votes. I don't think they liked, liked me because I was a punk, right? You know, that, you know, so that was kind of like the funny thing. And then ran again, I, so at this time, when I got elected in Burnaby as a city councillor in twenty eighteen, like now I'm on my second term, I got re-elected, that was my sixth election. So I had, I got my ass kicked through five and I just got back and you know, and I had great support from my wife, my kids and they were like, you know, my, my daughter, my wife ran the campaign office and that kind of, it was like a family affair. My youngest son was out like dropping flyers and knocking on doors every day, right? So like, it builds up. And I think the thing, here's the real key, I think, why I elected that. People went like, okay, we know this Joe guy from DOA. It doesn't mean we're fans of the music or agree with everything. But we know that him and his band have stood for something and been activists for years and years, right? And so, oh, so this guy's serious. Okay, maybe I will consider voting for him. And it is a repetitive thing. So that's, I really encourage like anybody who comes from, well, it could be anybody, but people coming from different walks of life. We, artists, painters, musicians, a guy from construction, whatever, taxi driver. We need different people in politics with different points of view. And one thing that really helped me, I traveled around the world like for forty years, like played four thousand shows on five continents, I think, fifty different countries. So that gives you an idea of what that, how different the world is. And right here in Burnaby, we, it's like the most languages spoken in any town in Canada. There's a hundred and twenty different languages of the residents here. So when you travel around the world, you get an idea, yeah, oh, everything's not the same as it is back in my little neighborhood. I grew up in, in Burnaby, right? You know, or in this part of Canada, right? So I think that helped me like get a wider perspective.
So something you said about going door to door and maybe starting with the idea of like, I'm going to tell people what I'm about and what my ideas are, but actually learning that it's about what their issues are. It feels like we're living in just this increasingly polarized world. And people just kind of like want to stick with people who share the same ideas. And listen, I get it, like, I don't want someone bringing in like ideas that I think are objectionable in a lot of ways. Because like life is complex and messy, but I also feel like, hey, like unless we talk to other people, which is a lot of the intent of this show is getting different perspectives on leadership and hearing different opinions. It's like, unless we start, keep talking or start talking more, like what are we going to do? Like living in just these separate little bubbles that are constantly fighting, getting nothing done. So any thoughts on kind of like how polarized society is becoming?
Yeah, it's unfortunate, like it's happening an awful lot in the United States where I'm, you know, just being a musician, I basically probably spent about six years, six, seven years of my life down there. Played, played more shows down there than I have up here. I had just friends everywhere and I just, it's really sad to see what they, they become then. And I don't want Canada to fall down that same path and becoming that polarized. So I think it's kind of like, it's good to listen to your neighbors, even if you don't like everything about them, right? Because you know what? When it comes time and you need their help, you're like, oh, yeah, that, yeah, that Bob's kind of a jackass. But you know what? He, he did help me a bit here and you know, I don't really like him, but you know what? I'm going to stick up for him a bit. We're talking about that. We had a Zoom, a city council Zoom with members of Burnaby Board of Trade this morning. And it said, well, how do we get things done? Well, you know, we make the place, if we turn the cities into a fifteen-minute city where your services are near you. I mean, I know it's catchphrase used by everybody, but, and then you get a better sense of community because you get to know people. You know, the, you know, you walk to the market, but there's the old guy, yeah. Bill, he comes down, gets his groceries twice a week and you know, and we don't see Bill, they go like, huh. I wonder if something happened to him. It doesn't mean you're great friends with them, but you get to know the people in your neighborhood, which is kind of like, that's it. To me, that's a real important thing that you walk around. I mean, I did it with my old dog. I know my neighborhood inside out and just run into neighbors. And you know, just because I was always out walking the dog, right? And just like, this dog's got to be walked, you got one right there, right? Yeah.
Yeah, I, I struggle with it a little bit because like, as an example, I'm pretty, like pretty liberal guy. I grew up a lot, I was interviewing a friend of mine named Taylor and I just said offhand, it's like, oh, you know, I'm a really liberal guy. And he let out this big breath and rolled his eyes. He's like, yeah, I know. Because it's like, you know, I'm always, I, you know, I'm like a guy when I'm on stage with my band, like I talk a lot between songs. I care about the ideas. And like, I don't want to hang out. I don't want to spend time with people where I feel it's like, we're going to have to, have to like have these arguments about politics. But I don't want to be cut off from people either. I want to understand what people think. I want them to listen to my point of view so I can inform their process and their thinking and they do that for me. So like, when I say it's like, oh, we live in this polarized world, but I'm not like that. I'm like that too. Like I like hanging out with people who are straight edge. I like hanging with people who are vegans. I like hanging out with punks. At the same time, I work at, the nature of my job is I work in the corporate world. I work with all sorts of different people. And when I was an addictions councillor, I worked with people who were of all spectrums and all different backgrounds. And a lot of people who are involved in some pretty like bad stuff. And I just feel like, it gets too comfortable being your echo chamber because you don't grow, you don't learn, but you also can't inform the thinking of other people. But at the same time, it totally sucks to have to deal with people's like shitty ideas.
Yeah, the minute you stop listening to our ideas, the smaller your world becomes, right? Even though you don't agree with those ideas. And the same here, like, you know, my, my best friends are all musician guys I travel around with, right? Or I see in towns, you know, used to play in bands with her, show up, great to see you again. You know, it's like the type of people that you just got to say about thirty seconds worth of talking and all of a sudden you're laughing about something that happened in the past, right? You got that camaraderie. You got that camaraderie, right? But that go back to the the door knocking thing, like, you know, like, when you go door knocking, we're would be politician or politician. You gotta have some basic points that you want to impress people because some people don't want to talk and they go, huh? Why are you standing here? Why are you knocking my door? Which is like a pretty good question. Why are you wasting my time? So be prepared to go through your points, but then people come with all sorts of stuff. And I found that was really kind of amazing that what people told me, I'll go like, huh? And a lot of times they said to, you know what? I don't know much about that. I'm going to research that and I'm going to get back to you about that and then tell you what I think or if I can help you with this, right? And and same goes with like getting other points of view, right? There's this insaneoid. I can't remember his name, but he sends his right wing newsletter to all councillors, all politicians in Canada. And you can just turn these things off. And I thought, okay, it's good to hear what some of these insane noise, like, you know, that are on Fox News or like this guy writing to say regular email into councillors and MLAs, et cetera. You go like, wow, is that really what they think, right? No, but because you gotta be prepared for the other argument, right? If you don't and not say I want to hang out with that or I believe I don't believe in that stuff. Yeah, I don't. But it go like, huh, wow, okay. You know, this is a really diverse world and not always in a great way.
Yeah, yeah. So just out of like, for interest to the audience, but also out of my own ignorance, like what does a city council person do?
Oh, what do we do?
Yeah.
Yeah, well, we get we're on committees, like a lot of committees, right? Right now, I think I'm on six or seven. I'm the chair of the Environment Committee in Burnaby and the Vice Chair of the Planning Committee, which is really the nuts and bolts to like where the city is going, where you build these buildings, how you do that kind of thing, right? So and so you get a lot of reports from staff. They boil it down because, you know, you know, we're not all experts on housing or experts on this, you know. Like I'd say, I'm an expert on music in my own way, you know, from a punk rock perspective. But the staff boils down, they go committees and you read all the stuff so you can make an informed decision to convince the other councillors as a good idea. Then that gets recommended to council itself, the actual council meetings. And then that's where it gets voted on, right? Or at least gets their first hearing and then then we get an awful lot of feedback. One thing in Burnaby is really interesting is that we don't have an office at City Hall. We just do everything like through a laptop or iPad type thing. And then we go down to City Hall just for the meeting. So I don't have an assistant. I don't have an office. You know, if I get down there too early, I just kind of hang around and hope there's some chocolates on the front desk or something like that. Get out like killing time waiting for the meeting to start, right?
Yeah. So what from what did you learn from punk? That has helped you in this role? And what have you? What have you got from punk that has hurt you in this role?
Uh, well, what I learned from punk is that you gotta keep stick to your ideals. But what I also learned from being in a band and, you know, running like a small record label, there's a lot of law negotiation involved, right? So I've negotiated with bands, with rights societies, with signal music. I've also negotiated with like cops, mortar guards. You know, this part promoters that don't want to pay you, right? And, you know, and I even talked to a warden of a maximum security prison into keeping, this will be locked down at eight, but it rained, so it got delayed. So we were playing with BTO just like years ago. So Joe, I don't think you guys know the play because lockdown is strictly at eight and that's the rules of the institution. And so you guys have to miss your set. I was going, we driven up Saskatchewan for this and I said to him in a really nice way, well, well, Warden, I I know that there's a lot of DOA fans in here and DOA doesn't play the things like that purely and really they might riot. And the guy sat back went, hmm. Okay, well, for one evening, I'm going to extend the lockdown to nine. You guys can play, but no trouble. Like he boy had pointed at me. So you get used to negotiating. So that's kind of what I through my music career, like being like the bandleader, being a manager of the band, basically for the last 20 years. That helped me like, okay. You know, and you gotta be respectful of people, even if you think that person is just like, oh, God, how come I'm in the same room with this person? You gotta listen to them as a councillor. I mean, the one thing we do at council is really interesting. There's eight of us in America, so there's nine in total. So when you see the big stuff like in Ottawa, Victoria, provincial, they stand up, the the guys all got, I don't know why they always do this, have to they do up the one button on their jacket. You know, I, I don't know what's up, but it's okay to have your jacket open. I never stood up. And then they get up and perceive the guy, call the other guy the biggest liar who's ever watched the face of the earth. City council, you don't do that. Because, you know, this is a small group of people and everybody goes like, you gotta get their cooperation, right? And that's it. So, okay, your second part of the question was like, from punk, what have I learned not to do?
Yeah, like what what's hurt you from punk that in in this?
I can't think of anything in particular, like one of the fun things. Like being a musician, Mayor Hurley, Mike Hurley is also a musician. So me and him do like benefit shows, they do acoustic guitars. We did Ethiopian New Year's Eve. We did benefits for Burnaby Neighborhood House. We played about 10, 12 shows, right? It's really fun that so it's kind of the one thing that being a musician and being a punk, people go like, you know, people sure have their doubts. So like, oh, God, we elected a punk rocker like I burn me must be crazier than I thought, right? You know, they turned up. And there was a big article in the in their local paper and two page thread and had a picture of me in a suit and then a picture of me drinking a beer wearing a cut off jean jacket, like, ah, you're wearing 20. And the headline was, what the hell happened to Joey shithead? But people like, people were actually intrigued by it. You know, when you're in a band, people always want to talk, yeah. So you're in a band. And so then the double line, you're in a band, but you're elected official. Wow, how does that work, right? You know? I go, wow, you just act like a nice human being and works fine.
Yeah. I, I love that, man. You know, going back to one of my earlier questions, like a lot of people I know from punk and hardcore whose politics like I'm totally aligned with, a lot of them end up as as teachers, social workers, therapists, and like a variety of of like frontline workers, people in that space, like a lot of people work at like, let's say insight or any of those things, really noble, awesome things. Do you think politics is a good place for punks to to get involved in, like becoming politicians?
It's not for everybody. I mean, I have one of my best friends is most thorough, out noted anarchist you ever met. And lived in Grixton in the UK. And we'd actually nicknamed him Captain Anarchy, right? And he's like, and a super DOA fan too. He's just, Joe, you're running for office. Oh, my God. I used to be a fan of your band and, oh, like eventually came around, we're still friends, right? I don't think he still doesn't agree with it, right? But whatever, right? You know, like, you know, he doesn't trust any politicians. I don't think including me, you know, so whatever, right? You know. You know, you gotta it's not for everybody, but I think you you could do it like so. Got a guy up in Gibson's BC, the mayor Silas White is a musician. We played up there last weekend and he declared the day we played DOA Day in Gibson's British Columbia, right? And came up on stage and read a proclamation and handed me the proclamation that I went, that type of stuff is like gold. It was like, I was going, wow. I would never imagine anything like that, right? You know? And my old buddy Jim Green, rest his soul, who's a councillor in Vancouver and a great activist. He got DOA Day in Vancouver like 21, 22 years ago type thing and came up and yeah, it was, it was a riot. Me and him just laughed about it and thought this is like really funny, right? So and yeah, you know.
Well, going back to the early days, when you first were building this thing, like building DOA, doing those early records, booking your own tours, doing all that. How was it received in Vancouver? Like, you were essentially part of the first wave of people that made punk and hardcore, well, punk and then hardcore happen in Western Canada. Like, was it hard? Was it easy? Was it kind of lightning strike, strike, everything's happened? Or was it like slow going?
It was funny, we got a little small influx of money. We were like so broke. So this would have been like huh, like March, April, 1978, we started like in February, 1978 and we played like five, six shows. But we got the influx, a little influx of money from some unemployment UI benefit checks. And we thought, let's put it into a record. We want to record a record like Disco Sucks, Seven and GP and like eight hours, like the whole thing. It wasn't, and I got there, I hadn't finished writing the lyrics. I went, hold on a second. I had to write some lyrics on the spot and went, oh yeah, that sounds good. Let's say, yeah, that'll work for a tech thing. And so, but what we did was we were innovative and I think, because I said, I went down and found all the magazines in the register. I couldn't afford to buy them, but I stood in the register and wrote down like addresses. And I took a, and it would be a letter. You get a disco suck single. They'll, hi, my name is Joe. We have a punk band. We live in Vancouver, Canada, and we'd like to come and play in your town. And I had people today just going, what? And we mailed the records and waited for mail to come back. Occasionally somebody would phone, right? But that long distance calls are like, it's not so in those states. So then that just being innovative like that, then we got this thing said this was June 78. And I said, wow, your record's number one on the college chart in San Francisco. And we didn't know that means you sold like 20 records or whatever. We thought, wow, we're big. We, we, you know, when you're that age, you can't go, holy shit. Okay. And we went went down there and and this I say, you've got to be adventurous. I took the train down. Randy and Chuck took the bus. And Brad, our guitar player at the time, Brad Kent, rest his soul. He hitchhiked down the I-5 to San Francisco with his lost ball in one hand, no case, with his Samo. Before the show. And we got there and you know, and that weekend, we made friends with the Avengers, made friends with Jello and Dead Kennedys. And people were like, wow, they got, and it was kind of like, they got punk rock in Canada? In Canada, it's just like snow and hockey, right? And you know, the people's perception in the States of Canada and these guys are really interesting, right? Or good or whatever they said, right? Or crazy. And they thought I was crazy, which, you know, that sort of was, right? And that just started by being an adventure so that that it took off really quick just by doing that.
I love it. All right. I'm going to ask you three questions as we're closing off. They're going to get harder as we go. All right. First one is relatively easy, but maybe not. Did DOA coin the term hardcore?
Well, I never really realized what a friend of mine, Cliff Rynell, who used to do all the early shows in Reno, Nevada. All those guys were down in SF all the time too, right? Which was our main stomping grounds. He said, you know, Joe, I think you invented hardcore because he looked at, he found a magazine from like early 1980 and said, yeah, DOA is one of the few hardcore bands around, you know, but and then named some other like that Bad Brains and Dead Kennedys and Black Flag and three or four others. And he claims that's the earliest evidence that he saw of that term in print. So then what more from there? We were like in SF, six months later, we're down there like three or four, five times a year type thing. And down in LA, it's the same amount. And there was an article, it was, I think it was the magazine's called Destroy. And said, there's this new scene and a punk strain of punk called Hardcore. And named DOA same bands I just named, right? And that and this was like late 80 and we got back and we were working on Hardcore 81, but we didn't have a name. So our old manager, Ken Lester, said, how about Hardcore 81? Oh, yeah, yeah, that could work. But they also, it was Hardcore Plus. He said, I got two names and we picked Hardcore 81.
You went, you went with the right one. That was the right choice.
Hardcore plus like, huh? This is like, get some, get some steak knives with it, right? So, so in that sense, I think you could say, we did the first festival like that. We brought up Black Flag and remnants of Seven Seconds came up and played at the Wandermount on Richards. And so that was kind of first hardcore festival. Then we got the record on tour. Now, so whether I invented or not, not totally sure. One guy says I did. But what we made, we made it popular. We popularized it by going on this tour. And we were with other people like, you know, the people in DC and other scenes that they have picked up on this, right? And they were going, yeah, yeah, yeah. Like we're, you know, we're hardcore too, right? Not, it's not just DOA. So it's kind of kind of happened at the same time. So.
Okay. All right. Second question. Now, being a Canadian on the West Coast, you have no skin in the game. That's why I'm going to ask you this question. Back in the early heydays, we're talking like, kind of like early to mid 80s. Which was the best scene on the East Coast? Boston, New York or DC?
Well, I gotta say the craziest one was Boston. So if that's what you're looking for, like DC was great. One of the first shows we did there was incredible, like Ian's brother has got a tape of a cassette of we played this kind of hippie joint called Mountains, Oregon. But next time we played there, we played this radio, which is now the the new 930 club. Famous place there, obviously. And we were playing and it was packed and all these skinheads came down. And then the guy ran the hall in Miller sent waved over like, and I go, what is it? Right? Is this? Don't be alarmed, but somebody just came in with a gun. And I go like, okay, you know, Canadians come to a gunfight armed with a hockey stick, right? I go, so what do I do? Stand sideways? So I'm slightly skinnier, hit by the bullet type thing. And New York was I wouldn't call it that. It was crazy, but not that crazy. But Boston, what really makes me remember that one? We played there and, oh, right, we had this booking guy. The nephew of more of the comedian Marshall Burl. I went on Layermanage Rat and some other bands and stuff like that. He got us a gig in New York, which is really good. This is in LA, we set this up and he got us a gig in Boston. When we got to Boston, the guy thought it was DOA, this Irish group or something like that. They found out we're a punk band. He just locked the door and went, fuck you guys, right? You're not playing here and I'm not paying you. So Springer from SFT Control and the other guys were all hanging outside. No, we want to see DOA. So they arranged this gig down the street. Something like the Underground, Springer would remember. And as we were playing, all of a sudden they started doing this thing called the worm. And the entire audience, we all got on stage and they made like worms along the stage, like between our legs, around the drum set or on top of the monitors as we were playing this like crazy punk rock, right? And then the next time we, next time we got there, we played this little place that they oversold it because we were going, oh, yeah, you got you DOA, these guys are great. And we played about a song and a half. Tables were destroyed, the ceiling was ripped out, ripped out and the Boston police were there with like about 20 of them within five minutes. And they were going to arrest us. And our manager, who's pretty smart, went like, no, no, we're just a band. It's the owner there, let too many people in. And this Boston cop went, oh, yeah. Yeah. So we're packed, isn't it? Hey, you. And also it's just like, you know, so to me, we played on Boston Common, which was insane, like where the American Revolution started. Played outdoors on a circular stage surrounded by like 1,000 kids or something like that. And we're like, yeah. Hey, Boston takes the cake. I got so many friends from all three towns, right? So they were, they're all wonderful to play.
All right. Well, and shout out to, shout out to Jonathan Nastas and also to Mike Gitter, two of my favorite guys from the area. All right. Last question, and this is tough. This is a tough one. Outside of DOA, and actually, let's just take BC out of the question. Well, maybe not. No, let's take Vancouver and Burnaby out of the question. From whatever you consider punk or hardcore's heyday, what are the three best Canadian bands outside of DOA?
Right, okay. And take Vancouver out because I was throwing the Subhumans in there, right? So.
All right. You know what? Put the subhuman. Let's, I, I can't put that restriction on there. Let's say all of Canada outside of DOA, three best.
Yeah, okay. So Subhumans are great, like great songwriting, really good playing. And they put out a great show. Yeah, you know, they're all friends of mine too, right? So like, maybe I'm skewed that way, but it's one of my favorites. Um, and they put out a great show. Hey, you know what? They're all friends of mine too, right? So like, maybe I'm skewed that way, but it's one of my favorites. Um, I, I'd go probably make category probably four or five, I'd say SNF, SNFU's in there. Did, you know, like I'm not a super big fan of the records. They made good records. But the show was the show, right? And Chi was great. And Chi was like a really, really, uh, really funny guy, right? You know, he. Sad the way he ended, right? You know, but in his heyday, he was uh. Uh, I got one quick Chi story, this is kind of, it was going the way down. We were at a festival in Germany and somebody said, hey Chi, run in twenty minutes and uh. There was this bottle of whiskey that was backstage for all the bands. And Chi went, huh, okay, he grabbed it. And I'm not making fun of him or anything like that, like um, the guy was like a good friend. He grabbed the whiskey ball like a twenty sixer, I'm like, I could, good, 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 good. And uh, there was about three ounces left. He said, Joe, you want some? I go, I go, you're going on stage now. He went on stage and went crazy. And the Germans and the Italians went nuts. You know, it's a great go, uh, sage and orange, SNFU, like all my old friends, right? Uh, so they'd be in there. Um, personality crisis.
Yes, I was hoping you were gonna say that.
Great band. I underestimated, um, and great, great playing, John Card, great drummer Mitch. You know, most fearsome voice in rock and roll. Those guys were great, um. Out, out east, I think, um. Wow, who? You know, the band I really liked, uh, and they never made that much headway because they were great guys and they put a great show with the other. Oh God, really early Toronto band. You know, and did, didn't do that much in retrospect of, I don't know if they were one of the greats, but they're a pretty good band from the Toronto scene. And then, um. God, uh. You know, the best punk rock was in Western Canada. I think that's pretty clear. The Toronto people go like, oh, I'm gonna kill that guy next time he's in TO, right?
I love that, man. I'm so psyched you said personality crisis. They're, they're one of, it, it might be my favorite Canadian record. Maybe, i- if not like right up there and it's just like. It's just like not, I don't think it's a forgotten record, but it's a record that's not known enough. That, that creatures for a while is like a perfect LP. I love that record.
One really quick story about those guys that I should get going pretty soon, um. So those guy, we were good buddies with them. So they show up my house. It was called the Plaza. We had about eight, nine rooms. It's kind of like. After every show, people come back to the plaza we call. Named after the plaza in New York, so we call it the Plaza West or whatever, right? And uh, so personality crisis was a show in Vancouver and not having our show booked. And they finally, uh, they drank all the beer, they ate all the food. And there's never much of either of them in our fridge. It was like nine roommates. And I go, I, I look at them, they'll be sitting there like, huh, huh, like smoking a cigarette. He's got another show. Oh, uh, yeah. I said, here's a number of guys to alcohol, sneak across the border, go play, like, but get the fuck out of my house, right? So like. I, I love those guys and uh, you know, um, yeah, uh, like wonderful stuff, right? So.
Awesome. Oh, listen, uh, Joe, this was so great. Uh, any, as we're closing off, anything you want to shout out? Where can people find you? Where can they learn about DOA or any of your other things you want to promote?
So we've got a busy, I'll give you a two minute person, busy year coming up with DOA, um. Uh, Canadian stuff coming up, uh. Um, we're playing with Fear in Vancouver on the twenty first, uh, at the Vogue. So that'd be interesting. There will, there will be a Moshbit, I understand, you know? Um, and we're going to Europe in the summertime for three weeks, uh, play Rebound and a bunch of other festivals, um. We would do a whole bunch of states, uh, state side stuff in the falls, uh, like um, Texas down to Florida, East Coast. Um, I've got a solo record coming out in uh. April first, I think it's called Stand, singer like you're standing up, stand. So this is all on Sudden Death Records. It's not released yet, um, so people can go to suddendeath.com, they can see. What we have on, oh, we're doing a really cool reissue of uh, War and Forty Five. Which is like, yeah, so it's forty thousand anniversary. I know it's like basically the forty first, I'm a little bit slow on this stuff, right? But. Um, and we've got the original eight tracks and then seven more demo tracks recorded at the same time. With Chuck Biscuit's drumming and then the War and Forty Five with Dimwit, Dimwit drumming, who I considered. Two of the top five drummers of all time, both of them are like pretty amazing, right? On the same record and uh, yeah, so, um, so lots of stuff happening at Sudden Death, right? So. Uh, yeah, um, and I got uh. Uh, meetings galore. So I suppose I want to wrote, I'll do them by Zoom.
Oh yeah, man. Awesome. Well, listen, this was a, a real honor and privilege to speak to you and also just so cool to hear your take on it. Um, thank you so much. Any last words as we're closing off?
No, uh, just uh, hey, everybody, keep your chin up. We're in a troubled world, uh, but uh, never give up hope. There's always hope.
Hell yeah, thank you so much. All right, everyone, I will see you in the outro and Mike, drop the beat. Joe, thank you so much. You know, most of our interviews are two hours long or around that amount of time. Uh, Joe only had an hour and you know, he's so busy. So Joe, thank you so much for that time. It's cool though, because when you're with someone who can really chop it up and. Understands how to communicate, you can get a lot done in an hour. And this was a great example of that. If there's anything I'd encourage people to take away uh, from this is that. Anything that happens in the world, anything good that happens in the world is because people decided to make it happen. One person or two people or ten people or a hundred people got together and made it happen. And they didn't just make it happen through force of will. They talked, they thought, they planned, they succeeded, they failed, they got back up again. And getting into that space requires the ability or the, the belief that you could do something. And then the ability to execute on it and go out and do it. So uh, I encourage everyone here, you know, A. Check out DOA if you haven't yet. And if you do already love DOA, then go listen to him today because they're great. But also, if you believe in something, you want to see a change, then be the first person to raise your voice and get to action. All right, everyone, that's it for now. I'm Aram Arslanian and this is One Step Beyond.